Good evening.
Good evening.
Ah, come on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There you go. Today is January 22nd, 2019, and we're really honored that we have a room full of -- not full, got a lot of folks here tonight. When we see a big crowd, a lot of times we say, "Oh, shoot, what did we do?" But it's all good, and we're glad that you're here tonight. It's the tradition of this board to start by doing a couple of things. We always have the pledge, and another thing we do, it's been the tradition of this board and boards all across the United States since even before the Constitution was signed, that we do a couple of things. And one of them is what's called a solemnizing prayer. And so you know, these prayers are for us. These are for the commissioners. And we do that because we think this is important. We look for wisdom as we seek to do what is right for the county. And so we'll have our chaplain come forward that'll do this. And commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we thank for the privilege to be here tonight. We thank for our county commissioners, the preparation they've made for this meeting tonight, Lord, and we thank for those in attendance tonight. We pray, Lord, you give them the wisdom they need as we discuss the different business needs to be taken care of tonight. Again, we thank for Rowan County, Lord, and we love this county, Lord, and we thank you, Lord, for the work that's being done in this county. We pray we grow and prosper, that, Lord, God leads us this night. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chaplain Taylor for being with us again tonight. Appreciate you very much. So, let's see. We've got the agendas been provided for us. I don't think at this point I know of any changes that we have to the agenda. Does anyone else have any changes, additions or deletions? Or if not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then we have the minutes from January 7th. Were provided for us. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is provided, items A through L. Motion to approve consent agenda.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we're at public comment period. That was quick. First up is Joe Teeter. Joe, you have 35 minutes. All right, not really, you have three. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's -- I was taking notice in the paper recently about the lawsuit regarding prayer of county commissioners and noticed that there was a bill to be paid. So I have a little gift for y'all tonight from my wife and I.
This is a check now from Rowan County as a token of our appreciation and your courage for standing up for prayer in Rowan County.
Can we take this?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Joe.
I have one obedience for the biocommission. Could you take the token and take it to the CD and pass it back?
The first amendment to the United States Constitution, first few words say, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." That CD that I gave you has on it a tour of the United States Capitol, and it proves beyond any shadow of a doubt that during the eight years that Thomas Jefferson was president of the United States, they held a weekly church service in the U.S. Capitol Building. And Jefferson had the Marine Corps banned to play at those services. So this idea of separation of church and state is a farce. It did not exist when the Constitution was written. All of those guys during the debates, when they passed the Constitution and this amendment was written, recognized that it was simply a prohibition against Congress, not against Rowan County, not against the state of North Carolina, and it was understood that no denomination would rule over the whole country. The Baptists would not be in control. The Lutherans would not be in control. That's what they meant by freedom of religion. So my wife and I would like to thank you for the hard-fought battle. And the day after the Alamo was fought, it looked really ugly. But the battle that we are fighting for the truth, we know who wins in the end. So I would just like to take this opportunity to thank you, and we just wanted to show our respect for what you have done, for this little token, to help pay that bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. The next up is Ronnie, is it Smythe?
Smythe, yeah.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Welcome, Ronnie.
Ronnie Smith from Salisbury. And good evening again. Someone said, "I'm like that old winter cold. I just keep coming back." But I'm here tonight, and I wore my coat. And I wore that for a reason, because it's my Air Force flight jacket, one of my jackets I had in the United States Air Force. You know what I'm going to probably say in a minute. But at the first meeting of the year, we made several resolutions together. We said that we hope we can complete, support, and finalize a number of very, very, very important projects for Rowan County this year. I'm here this evening to once again ask for your full support and cooperation in helping us to make these dreams come true for Rowan County, especially, number one, our Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial, the enlargement and enhancement of our Salisbury National Cemetery project, the brand-new Yakkin River Park, which we'll hear about more later this year, and if at all possible, the proposed Trinity Oaks Downtown Senior Housing Project, which will be located hopefully diagonally across from the Bell Tower Green. In summary and in closing, I would like to ask you a question. Who are you tonight? Who are you tonight? There are four kinds of people that I know in one classification. Number one, the person that makes things happen. Number two, the person that sits back and watches things happen. Number three, the person that doesn't care and don't know what's happening. And number four, unfortunately, there's some people that like to obstruct, delay, and prevent good things from happening in our county. I'm here again tonight to ask you, let's all work together this year to make things happen. We have so many wonderful opportunities in front of us, and with your support and the support of our Rowan County and Salisbury community, they will happen. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and a separate, more detailed explanation I provided to several of the commissioners who attended our meeting on October the 2nd. Again, God bless you, and thank you so much.
Ronnie, thank you. Good to see you again. All right, the next item, item number three, Scott Shelton, our Vice President Economic Development Commission, come forward and talk to us about revised incentive agreement for Project Care.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. As the chairman said, I'm back again today to talk about Project Care. And just for the benefit of those in attendance, I'll briefly go over the history of this project, again, briefly. It's an existing employer in Rowan County. On October 1st, the board had a public hearing and approved a Level 2 grant for this project, which would pay back to the company a grant equal to 80% of the new taxes paid. Under the original parameters of this project, the company would retain its current employment levels, create about 59 new jobs that would pay an average salary of little over $46,000. They would also invest about $68 million in new construction and equipment. Since this grant was approved, the project parameters have changed. The company is now proposing to create 35 new jobs with an investment of $45.2 million. The main difference between this proposed investment and the prior investment is about $20 million and also a little over, you know, 20 new jobs. We've been told that an additional $20 million in jobs, I'm sorry, $20 million in 20 new jobs through the transfer of an existing production line to Rowan County is still a possibility, but it's on hold indefinitely according to a company representative. That is, it could happen here, it could happen elsewhere. There's no decision being made at this point for various reasons we weren't told about, but it's still a possibility. So with that said, the numbers that I presented to you are based on the new investment of $45.2 million, and you had those in your agenda packet. But now, during the five incentivized years, Rowan County would collect about $1.3 million, and the incentive grant would total about a little over $1 million. And during those five years, the county would retain about $337,000. Over 10 years, the county would collect $2.8 million, disperse that grant of $1 million that I just mentioned, and keep about $1.8 million of new revenue. Now, along with the changes to the parameters of the project, the company's also requested changes to the incentive agreement that the board approved on October 1st. There are mainly changes to the job numbers and the investment along with some other modifications, and I'm trying just to real quickly go through these, and we can get into the details later if you'd like. But again, one of the main changes is the new proposed investment, $45.2 instead of $68 million. And I provided a copy of the original agreement and also the revised agreement in your packet. And in the revised agreement, this change of the new investment is mentioned in the agreement section called "Witnesseth." Did I pronounce that right, Jay? Witnesseth? Sorry. Also, the 35 proposed jobs versus 59, that's changed in Article 3 and Sections 1 and 2. And also the project completion date and start date for the grant. Completion date is now December 31st, December, I'm sorry, December 31st, 2019. It was 2018. And that makes the start grant, start date for the grant FY 2021 versus FY 1920. And that's in Article 1, Section 2, and also Article 2, Sections 1 and 2. There's also some changes to the clawback provision in the agreement, and really just the, I guess, at the end of the day, the intent and mechanics remain the same. It's in Article 4, Sections 2 and 3. And I'm sure Jay may have some comments or wisdom on that, but it was just trying to, I guess, make things more concise. But the end result is still the same. If the company were to terminate its operations or eliminate over half its workforce, it'd have to repay all the grant monies paid out over the previous 36 months. And again, these changes have been reviewed by county attorney J.D.s. And also, just as an FYI, the city of Salisbury will hold a public hearing on February 5th to consider a similar agreement for the city. They had a courtesy hearing last week, but they'll have their formal public hearing next week. And we request that the commissioners approve this agreement. Now, while we don't guarantee it'll ensure Project Care will choose our community, we do feel confident that it'll greatly strengthen our position in trying to win this project. Any questions?
Jay, any comments from you regarding the requested changes?
No, the only substantive changes were the jobs and the amount of the investment. The other changes were more semantic and just kind of clarifying some sections. Graham Corrigan from the city thought about some changes, but those were just sort of clarifications. They didn't change the substance of the agreement.
So the clawback then is the same in your opinion?
It is. And the discussion was, if you recall, the agreements, if they close or announce they're going to close, which we consider to be eliminating more than 50% of the jobs, then we have to recapture the previous three-year payments. The other section is if they don't hit their performance targets, meaning they create 30 jobs instead of 35 jobs, we prorate reductions in the grant payment. So there are two different sort of penalties for not hitting the targets. One is they're trying, but market conditions, they don't meet it, so we prorate and reduce the amount, and the other one is we eliminate it and recapture. So we were just cleaning up those provisions, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, one more point I wanted to make. As I mentioned in those numbers, because of this new investment, they were about $70,000. So again, it's a Level 1 grant now, not a Level 2.
Are your numbers that you presented tonight, are those reflective of 75?
That's correct.
Just in your grant?
Just didn't agree yet. It says 80%. I'm sorry, it's supposed to be 75. So that's what we're asking for, 75% today.
All right, any questions?
Scott, just so that folks will know, what would be your estimate, once this project is completed, of the total investment in this community that the company already has?
You mean as far as their existing facilities? And, you know, I would, I'd have to see that note. Vice Chairman, I'd say it's in several millions of dollars. I mean, they're one of the larger taxpayers in the city of Salisbury and Rowan County. I'm sorry, I don't have that exact number in front of me, so.
Well, and I just bring that on, but this is not a new corporation. This is somebody that's very stable in our community, and we're not, you know, we don't, we're not discouraged by the number of jobs that they're guaranteeing. It's just the way that things have worked out with their investment in this particular incident incidence. And we're not, we brought up clawbacks, which is typical of every grant that we, or every project that we work with, but this is not something that is out of the ordinary. And these folks are very, very stable members of our business community already.
Yeah, and I think this would also further strengthen their commitment and roots in the community, you know, an investment of this size. But again, these are, you know, very well-paying jobs, and as the vice chairman said, very stable company. And also, too, this decision to lower the scale of the project was not made locally. It's above them, and it may still happen, but right now, we're just wanting to move forward with what we have, and maybe it'll help land this extra $20 million and extra 20 jobs we've talked about.
Anything else for Scott? All right, if not, then at this part in this item, we will, we will open the floor. We're going to have a public hearing, and in a public hearing, anyone that would like to come forward to speak either on behalf of or against an incentive agreement, or just comment on it, can come forward and do that at this time. All right, if we don't see anyone, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the revised incentive agreement for Project Care?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Scott, thank you. Now go get 'em. All right, the next item, Aaron Poplin, public hearing for Z-07-18.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request, Z-0718, from Tracy Kinzer. He is requesting the rezoning of a two-acre portion of his parcel, 319-153, located at 5025 US 601 Highway, from rural residential to neighborhood business. Now, Mr. Kinzer, he's owned that property since 2006, and he currently operates a rural home occupation for selling playground equipment and mulch and some other wood products. And as a rural home occupation, you can only have 2,000 square feet in operation area. And he's looking at expanding his operations, but in order to do that, he has to go through the rezoning process. So if we take a look at the plan, it's in Area 2 of the Western Area Land Use Plan, which are areas adjacent to Salisbury-Spencer, China Grove, and Landis. And in this plan, they do recommend including some mixed-use development along highway areas with commercial components to support local residential populations. So let me go down to the zoning in the area. Once it loads in here. Well, it's not looking like it's loading up right now, but there we go. So if we look at the zoning of the area, most of it's zoned RR. There is a neighborhood business section right here, about 250 feet away. And then there's about a 16-acre CBI tract here, or zone here, that's got a Dollar General and a couple other smaller businesses on it, right there at the intersection with Cobble Road. So then, taking a look around the vicinity, you can see on the side here, the site. So we got some of the wood works right here, a little bit more of the wood there. Then down here is the playground equipment and a couple more piles of wood, which he's selling as firewood. And then US 601 Highway has a 15,100 vehicle per day capacity, and as of 2017, it's at 7,700 vehicles a day. Now, back in November, we had a planning board meeting about this request, and they adopted the two following statements. A statement of consistency, which is, Z-0718 is consistent with the Western Area 3 Land Use Plan based on the following: the property is in close proximity to similar zone property, and due to the location of the property along US 601 Highway, which is a major thoroughfare. Then they also adopted the statement of reasonableness, which is, in accordance to Section 21-362J of the Rowan County zoning ordinance, and after due consideration, the planning board advises that Z-0718 is reasonable and in the public interest based on the following: the property is in close proximity to similarly zone property, the property is located along US 601 Highway, which is a major thoroughfare, and the rezoning of the property would not be detrimental to surrounding areas or the general public. And then as far as procedures for the night, we need to conduct a public hearing, adopt a statement of reasonableness, adopt a statement of consistency, and then approve, deny, or table the request. If you have any questions, both me and the applicant, Tracy Kinzer, are here to answer any for you.
All right, any questions for Aaron? If not, would the applicant, anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, if nothing else, then we will conduct a public hearing, and we'll open the floor. If there's anyone that would like to come speak on behalf of or not in favor of this rezoning, then come forward and speak. And if there is no one, then we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, on page, let's see, 7. Yep. Do you have those, Commissioner?
I do.
All right. If you'll offer up the statement of consistency?
I'd like to make a motion to make the statement of consistency that Z-0718 is consistent with the Western Rowan Area 3 Land Use Plan based on the following: the property is in close proximity to similarly zone property, and the location of the property is along 601 Highway, which is a major thoroughfare.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then a statement of reasonableness?
Make a motion that the statement of reasonableness is in accordance to Section 21-362J of the Rowan County zoning ordinance, and after due consideration, the planning board advises that the Z-0618 request is reasonable and that the public interest is based on the following: the property is in close proximity to similarly zone property and location along highway, US Highway 601, which is a major thoroughfare. The rezoning of the property would not be detrimental to the surrounding areas or the general public.
Do we have a second?
Said.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a motion to approve Z-07, Z-07-18.
So move.
And a second?
Say.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Kinzer, thank you. Next item, item number five, Leela Imes, kind of talk about public hearing for road name changes resulting from the Old Betty Ford realignment.
Thank you. So I'm going to start off just by talking a little bit about the overview of the realignment. The NCDOT started this project back in 2016, I believe, and even though we aren't doing anything with the realignment, we are tasked with renaming the roads and doing the addresses. So this is kind of an overview. You can see on the map here. This is how Old Betty Ford Road currently is in the red, and you can already kind of see where they've started construction of this new portion right here. So this purple section, we are proposing to be named Boston Road. This road right here where it intersects is Boston Road, so we are just wanting to continue that to this dead end right here. This bridge will be taken out fall of 2019. This red portion along this road is supposed to be done summer of 2019. So what will happen is this will be Boston Road all the way to here. Once this bridge is removed, it will dead end. The next portion is this blue portion, and so once that bridge is taken out, it will go from that dead end all the way to Old Betty Ford Road. And just to kind of give you a background on this portion of the road, we had a public information meeting back in November where we invited property owners along this area just to kind of give them an overview of what we were hoping to happen and get some feedback on this name, because there wasn't really any clear name that we wanted to go with. We did get, you know, several road name suggestions from property owners. Unfortunately, most of them are already taken in the county. Some of them had some other things that were wrong with them. Maybe we felt like it would cause confusion. But the general consensus that we got from people is that they wanted to have some type of nature-themed name. We went in with a road name suggestion of Principal Rivers, and that was for Principal Ray Rivers at Boston Elementary. A lot of people didn't like that name, which was, I mean, that's what we wanted to have. We wanted to get feedback on it. And so we started digging. Some people said that they wanted something that was historical, something that was unique to that area. So once we kind of got that feedback, we came back and started looking anywhere that we could think of to look for a road name. We started looking in the historical room in the library, and unfortunately, all of the things that might have been able to use in that area, most of the names of significant people were already being used. So then we started looking at nature-themed names, and we had, we actually found a natural areas inventory for this wooded area around right here. And in that natural areas inventory, it stated that there was a patch of chalk maples there, which was very rare to Rowan County, and so we felt like that would be a good name for it. So that's why we are proposing Chalk Maple Road. Lastly, this other portion, so where this goes right here is what used to be Lent's Road. The NCDOT has changed it to where this will kind of, will intersect right there, and this portion where that orange ends will dead end. This portion of the road, we already had 100% agreeance on the road name here, so that's already been approved, so you can kind of ignore that, but that portion will dead end. And so we're proposing that this, this area, this portion of what is Lent's Road be renamed to Old Betty Ford Road. And just going back to the first, so you can kind of see, this portion right here is already Old Betty Ford, so it will continue this way and go all the way down and connect back over here. So those are what we're proposing to change. If you have any questions, myself along with some, some other workers that we've been working with at the beginning of this are also here, so if you have any questions, just let me know.
All right, any questions for staff? All right, don't go far. All right, so we're going to conduct a public hearing again, and this one will be for the name changes that have been laid out. And so we'll open the floor. If we have anyone that would like to talk about that, had an opinion about it, one way or the other, be happy to hear from you. All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, I suppose what we are, we're being asked to approve that the purple road segment will be a continuation of Boston Road, the blue segment will be named Chalk Maple Road, the 3,500 to 4,200 blocks of Lent's Road will be changed to Old Betty Ford Road, and the newly constructed road will be named Old Betty Ford Road. So do we have a motion to approve those name changes?
So move.
And a second?
Say.
Any further discussion? All right, if none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your time. All right, we have now a public hearing. Ed Muir, Planning Director on Campground and RV Park Text Amendments. Ed, thank you.
There we go. Okay, so the zoning text amendment proposal that we have tonight, conducting a public hearing, is related to the moratorium the commission adopted in August of 2018. And that was a six-month moratorium that allowed the planning board to, to study the topic in general. And so we've had one meeting back in, I think in November, where we presented some draft recommendations to the board. Didn't get a whole lot of feedback from the commission at that time. So the planning board held a courtesy hearing in November. And those are the recommended text amendments we have tonight that I'm going to present to you. And so anytime during this presentation, please feel free to interrupt me and ask questions. So one of the first things we did was defining a campground. If you look here at item or line numbers 15 through 19, we have a new definition for campground. These are primitive campgrounds. These are folks that provide tent camp spaces, nothing more than that. It also would include, or does not include, folks that would camp by an individual or family on their own property. Again, it's temporary overnight or primitive tent camping. The next definition we have is for a dump station. And this, this is basically a holding tank or a septic system that would provide a method of sewage disposal for an RV park. Excuse me. As we move forward, the next definition that was added is that of a light-duty truck. This is pulled directly from our flood damage prevention ordinance. That is a federal or federally recognized definition, I guess you could say. And the reason it's important here is because it does the job of towing a recreational vehicle, which we have that definition here. Very similarly, it's pulled from the flood damage prevention ordinance. The item that I would draw to your attention, because I know there's been some conversation about would we regulate time or terms of use or length of stay, I guess is a better way to put it, within a park? And we had a lot of discussion about that at the committee level, as well as the planning board level. But generally, the feeling was that if item E is adhered to for any new or expanded park, if that RV is fully licensed and ready for highway use, then there should be no real concern about the length of stay for that vehicle, if it's on site. Then we have a definition for a recreational vehicle park, which contrasts that of the campground in that it's longer-term occupancy for a recreational vehicle. And it does provide some services as well, water and sewer service. These standards would be ones that would be applied to properties in the commercial business and light industrial district. These would require that each new park have a minimum of two acres. You see there setbacks there. The interior drives would be a minimum of 18 feet wide, six-inch gravel base. Recommendation from the Fire Marshal was that they provide some type of turnaround. And in her estimation, the hammerhead-style turnaround were the most effective. Parking spaces, one per site. Screening and buffering would be required. The additional standards that apply to RV parks only are those that are going to be water supply. They've got to provide some method of water supply, approved by the Health Department. Similarly, it's going to be a method of sewage disposal, provide trash removal. And the only requirement that would, would apply to all existing and new parks would be this idea that everybody has to have a unique road name, if they don't already, and have a street address displayed on all their sites. That was one of the things we heard from the Fire Marshal that would be very important and very helpful to them in responding.
And that would be at their expense to put up a, a street sign?
We, the county would put up that street sign. Yes, sir. In fact, I think there's around 30 notices that were sent out to all current park owners that we have record through the tax system with. And told them about this hearing and that this requirement would apply to them if they don't already comply. And if it's adopted, they've got 12 months to, to get this process completed. And we will contact them to assist them with that process.
I'm assuming under the water supply, that approved and permitted by Rowan County Health Department, drawing water from the lake is probably not an approved water source, is it? Do you know?
I would think not, but I, I don't know for sure. Ah, yeah. The other thing about this particular section is that this only applies to the CBI district. So these special requirements would be reviewed and administered administratively. So there's no hearing process for these. If the property is on CBI, that process happens then at 402 North Main. It doesn't come to this office, as it's currently proposed. There's no real changes here, just the sections got moved down. The next excerpt is from the, the conditional use section. For properties that are zoned RA or neighborhood business, these standards would, would apply to them. They mirror what we just went through. Interior drive, parking, screening, buffering, water supply, sewage disposal, and the like. Those things are there. And this may give you a little bit better idea when I talked about the administrative aspect. Again, if the property is in an RA district, there's, there's a conditional use process, and you're all familiar with that. There's a hearing only in front of this board. It doesn't go to the planning board. It only happens here. There's the findings of fact, they meet the standards, that kind of stuff. There's a site plan process. If they're, as it's proposed now, the change removes campgrounds and RV parks and cabins from being permitted to now having those SR standards. And we went through them. And that's an administrative process. If they can come into our office and they bring us the site plan, and they can show these things all work out, then we stamp them and allow them to move on with, with the process. And still a conditional use in the neighborhood business district. And that is really it as it relates to this. And the planning board did adopt, did adopt statements of consistency that you have here, if you get to that point. So it's rather quick, brief, but in all honesty, there's not a whole lot to it. But I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So when we, we began this process, I, I don't know that, that you guys got this, but this represents a tremendous amount of work that planning staff did. And what this is, is it's just a compilation of the rules from individual counties that relate to, to certain characteristics of, of campsites. And so they compared Rowan County's rules to Davidson County, Montgomery, Stanley, Richmond, Iredell, Catawba, Lincoln, Gaston. And they even looked at Brunswick, Pender, Henderson, Onslow, Buncombe, Cabarrus, New Hanover, Carteret, Boone, Maggie Valley, and Emerald Isle. And so when, when we were wondering, well, what do other communities do? This spreadsheet really told us how, how others, how others treat their campgrounds. Davidson County, being close to us, we paid special attention to. Things that I was really in tune to was the issue of length of stay, which is really, it's not addressed in many of the counties at all, which surprised me. And then the other issue was room additions. And so we had not addressed that. Ed and I spoke. And even though the planning board didn't address that directly, there were some, some changes that I'd like to talk about and maybe include that we think Ed and I believed would, would be helpful. So there's, there's just two things I'd like for us to consider. And that is, if you look at the chart on page 85, where he was highlighting the cabins and campgrounds in the CBI district, those were going to be changed to, to where the planning department themselves could just do the permitting. And he said that was a change. And so I'd like us to, I'd like us to treat these all the same, whether they're rural agricultural, CBI, or neighborhood business, to where they have the same approval, which would be conditional, conditional use. And in that regard, they would come to us for approval, give us, give the planning board a little bit of cover, but also allow us to kind of keep tabs on what's going on in development on the lake, because it is such a big asset to the community. And then lastly, I'd like to recommend that along with the other additional standards, and they, they, they really did address a lot of these. Water supply, there was a concern. Certainly sewage disposal has been a big concern in some of the existing. And less so trash removal and street addressing. But certainly the sewage disposal was a big one. So they've addressed those in a good way. I'd like us to add, and Ed and I talked about this, but I'd like us to add an item number five to those. And that would be that because we did not really address additions to these, that additions are not prohibited, but must be freestanding and obtain all requisite building-related permits. So that, that will just read into those standards because I think there's, in a lot of, there's a lot of times where additions are being made that are not permitted, and they are attached to the buildings. And that, that isn't what I think the county is looking for and that they need to go through the requisite building-related permits. So I, I appreciate all the work that this committee has done. It's not been easy. It's, staff has been taxed with an awful lot of work on this. And I, we haven't done any revision since, what, the 90s, Ed? So I would like to see us change that from staff review to, to conditional use on page 85. And I would like to add an item five, that while additions are not prohibited, they must be freestanding and obtain all requisite building-related permits. And certainly open for discussion.
Ed, could I ask you a question or two, since we've amended this, please?
Sure.
If a permit is drawn for these additions to be freestanding, what's going to be the repercussion when maybe the camper is pulled off-site? Does that structure still have the ability to stay there, or does it need to come down?
Well, since it's freestanding, I guess it could stay there. I guess it'll be a, it'll be a contractual agreement or issue between the owner-operator of the campground and that particular lessee. The, the conversation that, that the chairman and I had about structures being attached was they're supposed to get permits anyway.
Correct.
And by acknowledging that in the ordinance, I think it, it may give us, being the, the planning department, a little more control over identifying when those are built without a permit. Because, you know, quite frankly, I don't think that the inspections office is in the policing mode as much as we are. And I think that's kind of where it comes. And so if it's recognized in the ordinance, it says, you know, hey, you've got this addition. And by the way, you, you don't have a building permit either. But back to your original question, I, I think that that's going to be a, a situation between the, the owner and the, the lessee. But it could stay. You know, if they rent it to another person, they're going to put a new turtle in the shell, so to speak. And that person's going to bring their unit up and say, hey, I've got a, I've got, I've got a deck already here.
Well, I guess my concern was somebody builds an attachment, so to speak, specific to their size of, of their camper or trailer, whatever it is. They pull it off, and the next guy comes in and says, well, this thing's too big. I don't want this lot. I don't want to end up having campgrounds with all these rotten structures sitting around because they don't accommodate the other people's mode of, of camping. So, so I didn't know if this would be something that we should address now before it gets to be an issue down the road. Is there, is there something that we could put in the amendment that would require them to remove that upon removal of their camper?
I guess it would be like anybody that builds an outbuilding at their house, and they sell the house, and you move in, and you don't like the outbuilding. I mean, it's kind of up to you. I mean, it's, you know, we can only inspect. We can't really expect on some of that stuff. So I think I said that right. But it's a good question, but I really don't know how to effectively do that. But I think that the point that, that we don't have any limitation on the additions is good because we're encouraging them to get the permit and make sure it's, it's there. And it's, it can be there for a while. That's kind of what we're hoping it will be. That makes sense.
Well, I think that, and the attorney can probably address this if I'm, if I'm incorrect, but, but any structure that would, would be built is ultimately the responsibility of the owner of the campground to make sure that there's not a liability there. If somebody gets injured when they, when they rent the property, excuse me, and come in and maybe something falls over on a child and hurts that. So it's, you know, it's going to be paramount that the campground owner addressed this issue in his lease. It would seem to me that it would be up to him to, to have the final say as to whether somebody has to tear down a particular structure when they leave.
Ed, with that being said, wouldn't the property owner be the one to have to draw the permit? Since it's attaching to his property?
No. I don't think there's any requirement that the owner be the one to come in and get the permit. I think in most situations now where there's a new power pole, put up the, the applicant comes in and applies for it. It's whoever pays for the permit. I think the general assumption is that you're, you're only going to put an improvement and get a permit for something on your property where you're fairly certain that it's going to be, or be, not be met with resistance. That's a good question. I, I don't know that there is a requirement that you be the owner of the property. I don't think so.
No, and, and I think, to your point, Commissioner Pierce, I don't think there's anything we can do to make them take it down. And so that's a valid question. But I think Ed's point, the overriding concern, was that we are at least pushing people into complying with, 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 with building codes when they build structures out there. But, but you're absolutely right. You could have structures that aren't attached to anything. And it's, it would be up to the property owner to sort of remove things or require... the property owner to sort of r- remove things or require people to remove them, and we would, but we would not have any control over that.
You know, a couple things on page eighteen, when they define recreational vehicle, uh, letter E says it's fully licensed and ready for highway use. So, um, fully licensed and tagged, um, there are a lot of these existing that are not tagged and haven't been in quite some time, um, and not ready for highway use because they are, um, they have structures that are permanently attached to them. Ed, I think you said that even our mobile home ordinance, what did you say about that? That we don't allow permanent attachments to mobile homes?
Well, the building code doesn't. They're not, they're not of a, of a construction type that, that, um, things are supposed to be attached to them. Any, any decking or anything like that is, is really freestanding associated with a mobile home. The ones that, the ones that are permitted and inspected, um, it's like when they put a roof on one, you see some of these that actually get re-roofed, they're, and they're freestanding, um, above the, or beside the structure, so, yeah.
You know, so I think with that thought in mind, that if a mobile home that is prob- I mean, I, I don't know this for sure, but I would think a mobile home is built to a little better standard than a, uh, an, a pull-behind camper, I would think it is.
Well, they're, they're, I think they're, they're sorta licensed maybe, or inspected in two different manners. You've got the HUD standard for the, the manufactured homes, and then I think the recreational vehicles have some standard themselves that they're, uh, adhere to, or, you know, 'cause they've got wiring, they've got, you know, things like that that, that are certainly life safety issues, and they're inspected as well. Um, they're just not a long-term living solution, and I think that's, that's where the, you know, the level of construction or the type and things like that sorta differ greatly between the two.
Yeah, but my point is, is I think the logic behind adding that language is that additions are not prohibited but must be freestanding is one. If a mobile home by zoning ordinance cannot have attached structures because of, um, of structural issues, and, uh, RVs are to be fully licensed and ready for highway use, in other words, can be pulled out of there at any moment, that not, not doing permanent attachments to these makes, makes, uh, makes logical sense. Mike, did you have something? Do you have something? Did you have something?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Got it.
I had two questions real quick. Um, so you were, uh, on page eighty-five, on page eighty-five, you were talking about under surfaces, seventy-eleven cabins and seven-thirty-three campgrounds, changing the, um...
Staff review.
Staff review to conditional use? Okay, but we've, but right now it's under permitted by right, and the planning board suggested changing it to staff review. Is that, is that what we're seeing here?
Yes, sir.
But you wanna change it to, uh, conditional?
Yeah, across the board, whether it's RA, CBI, or neighborhood business.
Okay. Uh, the other thing is, uh, so the, how much of this, or any of this affects existing? This is all new, right, for new, uh, campgrounds?
Newer expansions. The, um, the only element, and that's a good, good reminder, the only item that, um, would apply to existing ones is this street addressing component. And I'll be honest with you, um, I don't know if Lila's still here, but, but we ran a real quick check several months ago on our parks, and I think they're, I would say ninety percent of them comply with the road naming aspect. Um, we just hadn't gone through them and kinda done a spot check for addressing, but, um, there's just gonna be a couple that, that we run through from the addressing standpoint. Um, and that's something that's handled administratively since I would assume that in most cases there's only one owner, one road, and so it's approved, approved in-house. The county, we send that to, uh, Don Bringle's folks, and they'll make a sign and go up there and put it up for them. So we maintain the signs, too. The only thing that they're gonna really have to get their folks to do is put their, uh, put their new numbers up.
Okay, so, so they name the street if they want, and they call you?
We're gonna, we're gonna call them. We, we know where they are, and if we, we can look at on our GIS, if we don't have a, uh, a road name within that park, we'll, we'll send them a message. We'll call them or, uh, drop them a letter.
I had one that called me, and, and he'd been waiting for some good while, and he didn't know whether he misunderstood what should take place or not.
Yeah, well, when the, when this, assuming it's adopted in some form, and this requirement stays in, we'll have twelve months to, to get them into compliance. I mean, it, it shouldn't take long, but I think that's a reasonable amount of time to, to give them to, to be able to do this.
And you're saying that the sewage disposal part of this is not effect existing?
No. Now, let me, let me make one point, though. The, regardless of whether or not the text about, um, room additions makes it in or not, any existing campground that somebody builds a structure out there is supposed to get a permit anyway. So I don't wanna say that, um, these only apply to new, where the building code is still in effect, and it has been, and so for any addition that's been done that hasn't been permitted was, didn't get a permit. So that's still a requirement, and it's gonna be acknowledged in here just as a, oh, by the way, or just in case you didn't know, you've also gotta do this. Um, that's not a problem. But the only thing that is in here that's going to apply to existing RV parks is the street addressing component. We're not gonna go out and make anybody that doesn't have a, um, a septic system or water supply provide one now. This doesn't say that, or trash removal. Um, let, let me make one other point about water supply and sewage disposal. This, uh, a water supply can be just one, one well. It does, it doesn't mean multi-connection. It doesn't mean that there's gonna be, um, you know, a line to each, each new space. If they wanna do that, that's fine, but that's not what this is saying. Sewage disposal, same way. Every space is not gonna have their own individual system that's really gonna be like a, a dump station, like Dan Nicholas Park. If you've been out there, you know how, you know how these work. Um, I think you all do. So I just wanna make that point. This is not, this is not a mobile home park or a manufactured home park. This is not long-term living. This is for in-and-out, um, or some that may stay longer, but...
All right, any other questions for Ed?
Thanks, Ed.
All right, so we've come to that time where we will conduct a public hearing, and, uh, I'll go ahead and open the floor to a public hearing, and if we have anyone that would like to say something about that, Mike, come on up, if you're one. State your name and address, and, uh, tell us what's on your mind.
Yes, uh, Mike Jones. I'm one of three here representing the Salisbury Elks Lodge, and we have a twenty-four acre campground down at, on High Rock, uh, next to the Moose, and, uh, and I have to say that this is actually the first time we've heard of this. The only thing that, uh, I recall, and I'm chairman of the board, receiving from the, the planning board or the city, uh, or the county, rather, is, uh, a couple of letters about a survey, uh, which I don't know, I don't think we responded to. Uh, so that's part of, part of the thing that's kinda taken us back, and, uh, and then the other thing is, is, uh, you know, I have to question what the, what the need is for this, is, if you do a Google search, you'll find that there's only five RV sites public, uh, on, in Rowan County. Uh, there's three other nonprofit or private, the one being the Elks, the other being the Moose, and the other, whose name I do not know. But the largest is, is, is actually Dan Nicholas, which the county owns, so, and quite frankly, you have four sites there that do not have water or sewer. So if this is such a big deal, then why isn't Dan Nicholas already have taken care of these issues, if they are issues? Uh, so that's something that just doesn't quite compute to me. And, uh, so also, I figure there's maybe about two-hundred-and-fifty RV sites, both all temporary. So again, question the need for doing this. Uh, but as far as the Elks go, and is, and our concern is, we've heard that, uh, it wouldn't really apply to us because we're existing. However, what is expansion? If we have twenty-two of twenty-four acres, if we have that much already set out as sites, does that mean those last two acres, is that the expansion? Will we have to comply with these, these new rules for that next two, that last two acres? So I hope that would be clarified. The, uh, and I think he answered the questions about the water and sewer, uh, which, which is good, and I think way most campgrounds would, would offer, so. Uh, and then another, another thing we're probably not thinking about is, like with Dan Nicholas, for example, there's, there's four cabins. Well, what if the Elks wanted to add four cabins, or the Moose? I mean, how would that work? I mean, I, I realize we, we have to get the, you know, uh, inspection, this, that, and the other, but has, I mean, is there gonna be some land requirement around it? Is there gonna be some, uh, if it's just primitive, uh, camping with, with a cabin, that should be thought of or in, included. And, uh, and the other thing you probably ought to consider is, at least if, the worry is High Rock Lake, uh, you know, land out there is pretty, uh, pretty pricey. That, if you're familiar with Cross and Tamarack, uh, that whole, I think it's eleven acres, it used to be, uh, a lot of camper, you know, just small campers. Uh, well, that got sold, and now it's, I think it's called, uh, Lighthouse Landing, and, uh, for a cool two-hundred thousand dollars, you can get you less than an acre site. So my point is, uh, land is getting pretty pricey out there. If you're worried about more campgrounds, it ain't gonna happen. You know, to, you know, with property value rising, indeed, I would see, I, I probably even less of that going on, so, uh, I think that's all I have. My compatriots may have something else, but that's...
Thank, thank you, Mike. Who's next? Anyone else? Going twice? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Ed, do you have, uh, do you have any comment about the cabins issue? I was looking here. Um... You know, what, what do we do with expansions, and let's say they wanna add a, a cabin or two?
Cabins are conditional uses in the RA district. They're SR at this point in the CBI and conditional neighborhood business. Um, if you've got twenty-four sites now, I'm a pretty simple guy, and you wanna add one more, that's an expansion. Um, we're always willing to talk about it with our attorney and the smarter people in the room, but, I mean, that's kinda the way it works.
Expansion meaning they'd have to meet new requirements?
Yes, sir. But if they've already got a dump station on site, they've got a method of water supply?
It's permanent structure.
If, if they've got a method of sewage disposal on site now, and they've got a water supply method, both of which have been approved by, um, the health department, and the addition of three or four units doesn't impact the, the, uh, the efficiency of the system, then, you know, the only real thing they're gonna be looking at is probably the, um, the road standard and the turnaround if they don't have it. So, um, you know, while on its surface, there, there are obviously some performance standards that go along with it, but, you know, in some ways, maybe they've got some uncompleted. I, I'm not real sure, and I'm not familiar with that particular part, so...
Okay.
Did that answer, did that answer your question, sorta?
Mike, I'll, I'll, I'll address, um, I mean, your question is a good one, and that is, what's the deal? You know, why are we even doing this? Um, and I'll, I'll be happy to get you a copy of this to look at, but I think it was, was it ninety-eight was the last time we looked at our, our standards on this, and, um, certainly our surrounding counties had updated, uh, their standards for campgrounds a, a long time ago. Uh, when we look at Davidson County on a minimum acreage, and that's who we kinda compare ourselves most to because they're on the same lake that we are, uh, they have a minimum acreage of five acres. We left ours at two. Uh, they have fifty-foot, uh, front setbacks, we have the same. They have internal setbacks, fifteen feet between units. We don't have any. We still don't. Uh, density in both is determined by the health department based on, you're gonna put in septic, they determine how many units you can put in. Interior roads, uh, twenty-four feet, two-way, we're eighteen. Um, parking, one and a half per site, and ours is one per site. Um, screening is about the same. Buffering, they have a larger buffering than we, requirement than we do. They require at least eight percent of the total area to be recreation area. We don't have that still. Water and sewer has been required a long time ago, or wa- water and septic or whatever. Length of stay, uh, they have a, a rented-by-the-day requirement, not long-term. Uh, there's, there's no specifics on trash service, um, and they do have identified signs. So, you know, we, we didn't wanna be too restrictive, but we did know that there, uh, you know, we, we had a roomful of people here a few months ago about the potential of a campground coming in that was gonna come in under nineteen-ninety-eight standards. And I, I'm with you, Mike. Uh, I, I think the market's gonna fix all this in the next few years, but if, if folks wanna put some in now, then we felt that we oughta just step our game up. On, on Rowan County's side, uh, you know, we believe that the lake is a tremendous asset to Rowan County, and, uh, if, if, um, if we wanna be better, then we gotta act a little better. And so we just wanted to bring our standards up, not quite to even what Davidson is doing yet, but certainly in the areas of, uh, health, of, of water and sewer, uh, which we didn't ha- we didn't have those, and we, we understand they're, well, I won't go into what we hear is out there, but we wanted new campgrounds to be a little better campground. And, and make no mistake about this, we absolutely, uh, find value in, in lake campgrounds. We think, uh, they bring folks that don't live here to our community, to see our community, they shop in our community, they eat in our community, they bring tourism dollars to our community. We get to show off the lake to those folks who, and they may end up being permanent, um, um, landowners and homeowners, uh, at the lake, so it's, it's positive. We just wanna make sure that those that are there are, um, that, that becau- that are building the future, a real asset to everybody that lives on the lake, and that was it. That makes sense?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Come on up.
Well, you know, I'm pretty conservative, Greg, just like you. Seems to me that, uh, the best government is the one that governs the least. Uh, Salisbury Elks, we've been down there since nineteen-fifty-five. We've been very responsible, uh, nonprofit, and done a lot for this community over the years. And, uh, what you talk about, and if, I assume you're talking about maybe KOA or some big campground company, uh, I can't imagine a big campground company in, in, in being the Slock House. I can't imagine them having less than twenty-foot roads and water and sewer and Wi-Fi and da-da-da and da-da-da. Uh, so, I mean, I appreciate your concern, I appreciate, uh, you know, worrying about public safety, uh, but, you know, for us, or nonprofits, or Moose, the Shrine, if they ever decided to... the Shrine, if they ever decided to put a couple of RVs there, the Elks, the 40 and eights, I guess they're the only nonprofits. I would, I would hope that you guys consider a grandfather in us, at least. We've done everything we can for the community. What we do down there is for the benefit of our members. But we also do, like the polar plunge, we do, we have the, we, for 20 years, we've had the Nazareth kids down there. And we've treated them royally. And we, we do other things as well. So again, I appreciate where you're coming from and what you're worried about. But for, for the four nonprofits down there, it's overkill. Thank you.
All right. Do we have, we have anyone else? All right. If not, then we'll close the public hearing. And so we know where we're going on this. Commissioner Klussman is sick today. And so when we're doing, when we're doing some text, text amendment changes, if it is not unanimous, then we have to have a second reading of the issue in our, in our next meeting. And that would be, oh man, February, what's the date?
I forgot it.
It's first, fourth. This will be the first Monday in February. So even if we vote unanimous, we'll have to come back and have, have a second reading at the February 4th meeting. And so whatever we do tonight will not be
We won't have five commissioners there that night.
Well, we don't have to have unanimous. Yeah, the second one just has to be majority. So we have, we have those text amendments before us. I've asked for a couple of changes that I, I think will involve the commission a little more, whether we like that or not. We are responsive to the public. So Ed, how would we handle this? Would we?
Make a motion with the amendments?
So make the emotion with the amendments. But do we need to adopt the statements of consistency ahead of time? Or do we make a motion with the amendments, then adopt the statements of consistency?
Statements first.
Right. Yeah. And I think I would suggest, and Ed, help me if you can, but I, I would suggest that, that you move to accept the amendments into the text, not the text, but move to accept the amendment. So your consistency would still be applying to the new, as amended, then you, then you approve the text. And we'll have to have a second reading at the next meeting.
Okay.
You want that motion?
Yes.
And just to clarify one point, you do want to adopt your statements before you adopt the amendments. He's, he's right.
Save it.
You do want to adopt, if you want to kind of fall in line with what the, the planning board provided, you want to adopt these statements first before you adopt the zoning text amendments themselves.
Yes. But you want to make sure that your commissioners are okay with your proposed amendments to the text.
Right. Yeah.
All right. So you want to motion to accept the amendments as stated for ZTA 03-18 text amendments?
Yes, sir. All right. It's a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it.
This is including your amendments?
Yes.
No, this is just the, this is just the
To add the amendments.
To add the amendments.
Then we do the consistency statements and then we vote to pass the text amendments.
I'm fine.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then Craig, will you offer up statements of consistency?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept. Statements of consistency, ZTA 03-18 is appropriate with the necessity to meet the development needs of Rowan County for the following reasons: Not previously envisioned by the east/west/i85 southern corridor land use plans. One, development standards for campgrounds and RVs have not been updated since the adoption of the countywide zoning in 1998. And number two, the proposed specific standards for establishing and expanding campgrounds and RV parks promote health, safety, and general welfare to the RA, NB, and CBI districts.
You want to continue?
Do you want the rest of it? Furthermore, the adoption of ZTA 03-18 is deemed to, an amendment to the east/west/i85 southern corridor land use plan is as reasonable in, in the public's interest based on the following. Number one, campgrounds and RVs provide temporary lodging opportunities that are an asset for the recreational needs of High Rock Lake and Rowan County. And two, that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners has expressed, placed renewed emphasis on promoting recreational and development potential surrounding High Rock Lake.
All right. That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Take it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And do we have a motion to approve ZTA 03-18?
With, with the amendments.
With the amendments.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so as we look then at item number seven, the moratorium for campgrounds and RV parks, as a technical issue, we, we would, we would put this off until the next meeting, until the second reading. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Jay, Jay, anything you need to add to that?
No, I just moved to table it to the following meeting.
Okay.
You want that in form of motion?
Yeah.
Move to table moratorium until the next meeting, February 4th.
Do we have a second?
Take it.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Yes.
I just want to say to the, Mr. Jones with the Elks and the other people here, if there is some information, because I think you said this was sort of new to you, you just found out about it. But if you have information between now and our next meeting, please share it with us if it's going to have some adverse effects that we haven't thought about. So we can know for the next, our final vote, we have in a couple of weeks. So, that's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Absolutely. All right. So we have a motion and a second to table the moratorium ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn. You have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.